I'll let you keep it up then.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
I'm good.
How are you?
Good.
How's things going?
But yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. No, not in this position to be in. No.
The time is 7:00 PM. The date is Thursday, January 4th, 2023. And the regular council session is called. Um, roll call, Laura. Roger, can you take roll call? Somebody.
Sure, we'll give a go at this, uh, roll call. Part of the rod and all right. Here.
Jimin, just say.
Andy.
Mayor Gillen present.
Dr. Moon present. John Hardy present.
Great, thank you. We're all present tonight. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Public, which stands one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty and justice of our home.
Before we begin, I'm going to go ahead and rearrange the agenda a little bit. Um, we have our city attorney here tonight, and he is going to be on the topic of our charter review. So in lieu of, or in the light of saving some dollars, um, we don't bother him for a long period of time. I am going to move him, who was under number 10. Let me see. Okay, I have one. Oh. He was under number 10B, and I'm going to move, uh, five to 10, and I'm going to make him five A. Okay? Do you have that listed? And will that work for you?
Yes, it will, and thank you. I do believe it makes sense to, uh, not have me sit through the whole meeting if not needed.
Things we'll have to see. Okay, um, we're going to move on to public comment. Number four, this is a business meeting of the city council. The city values and welcomes public input on matters of city concern. Please address the council as a whole, rather than an individual council member or city staff. Council action on items brought up in the public comment is limited by the Oregon Public Meeting. The council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person with an optional two minutes for council questions and answers. If you wish to address the council, we will ask you to please come forward to the podium and identify yourself for the record. Further, if anybody in this room, whether it be staff or council or any of you feel disparaged by someone in any way, you have the right to get up and just go, I will not stop the meeting or what the person might be saying. So now that you have that right, if you want to be called back after it, go like this, and I'll know, stop and get you back. Okay? So, uh, I'm going to get my timer and then I'll say go. Hold on. Please introduce your name and address.
My name is Sandra Foot Gregory, and I live at 6th Avenue, Douglas Avenue in Jervis, Oregon. And I'd like to talk to you about something I'd like to see for our Christmas next year. And I'd like to share this with you so you can see what I'm talking about. Get up, walk around and share with you what I want to talk about. So I'll take a little more.
Maybe I'll pull it out as long as it keeps you.
What did she say?
We're going to give you that time back.
Oh, well, thank you.
You're welcome. On the south. Okay.
Would you like to read what it says to, so everyone knows what we speak?
What I would like to see is for us to have a real Christmas tree for our Christmas out here for this next year, if that is at all possible. Um, also, um, I would like to add something to our regular Christmas. I would like to see a Christmas, uh, and a memorial tree, if that is at all possible. I'd like to see it run from December 1st to the December 30th. And what I'd like to see is the live tree for Christmas. Uh, and Jervis, uh, can have a Jervis commemorative Christmas tree. And the tree would be filled with ornaments brought by Jervis, uh, families in memory of their loved ones. And each ornament would, uh, receive a small brass tag, like I've shown in the picture. That would be by the city. Um, and people would put a name on, you know, would put a name on, on what they, their ornament that they bring in and who it's for. So if there's a discussion, I'd love to hear your ideas, how you feel about this.
Well, it is public comment, and we usually don't comment a lot. So you know what? I'm going to make a comment on it during mayor's comments at the end. Um, moving on, anyone else? Thank you for coming.
My name is Brian Wagner, out of 166 East Timot Drive here in Jervis, Oregon. Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished members of the council and fellow citizens. I stand before you today, actually sitting, express concern regarding the current state of our city's leadership and the recent decisions that raised eyebrows in our community. It is crucial for us as engaged citizens to address these matters with a spirit of accountability and transparency. While we appreciate the mayor's efforts to manage our city during this interim period, the extended tenure of a temporary city manager raises questions about the urgency of securing permanent leadership. The community values stability, and a proper resolutionist matter would undoubtedly contribute to our collective well-being. The voters decided long ago that this is how they want things ran. If we respect democracy, we must respect that decision. Furthermore, it is essential to address the recent appointments to key positions within our city. The public trust and affair and impartial hiring process prioritizes qualifications and merit. Any perception of favoritism or nepotism erupts into us and placed our local government. Twice now, this council and the mayor has had the opportunity to fill paying jobs. And both times, jobs were given to very close friends. Looking ahead, as the mayor proposes a charter change with the council's permission, that consolidates hiring and firing powers and gives these powers to her and them, we must carefully consider the potential implications. Such a shift in authority requires thorough scrutiny to ensure that it serves the greater good and not the individual interest it seems currently serves. The mayor will tell you how this change will bring back power to the citizens. The council probably will also. But when they exercised their power, they didn't ask the citizens. They made the decision to hire a close friend on their own without the citizens' input. Transparency and checks and balances are the cornerstone of a healthy democracy, and we urge our elected officials to prioritize these principles in any decision-making process. In conclusion, let's collectively uphold the values of fairness, transparency, and accountability in our city's governance. As active participants in our community, we look forward to continued dialogue and collaboration to ensure that our local government remains a true reflection of the people it serves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in. Come and see me. Do you have anybody else?
Right for the record, my name is Douglas Lanfier, 940 Wingfield Street Northeast, Jervis, Oregon, 97026. Good evening, mayor, city council, and city staff. I hope you all had an enjoyable holiday season and happy new year to each and every one. As we gather here today, I'm reminded of the passage of time and the progress that has been made together over the past year. It has been exactly one year since I first stood before this council to share my thoughts and concerns in public comment. It has been an honor to be part of the dialogue that shapes our city's future. As we embark on this new year, I find it fitting to express my gratitude to the city council and my neighbors for their dedication and hard work in making Jervis a better place. The past year has seen us face recall challenges, celebrate victories, and come together as a community. I have witnessed the resilience and spirit of Jervis, and it fills me with hope for the future. In reflecting upon the journey of the past year, I am compelled to draw your attention to a matter close to my heart, one that I believe merits the city council's collective focus over the coming months. My concern is over the city's charter, a foundational document that outlines the principles and guidelines for our governance. The charter has undergone significant changes in the 2012 election that some in our community find concerning. As we move forward into the new year, I urge all of us to consider the importance of restoring the city charter to its pre-2012 status. This is not a call to erase progress, but rather a plea to ensure that the values and foundations that have made Jervis a great place to live are preserved for future generations. Let us engage in open, respectful dialogue to understand the implications of these changes and work collaboratively towards a solution that best serves the interests of our community. In conclusion, let this new year be a testament to our shared commitment to be to the betterment of Jervis. I look forward to another year of collaboration, growth, and positive change. May our collective efforts propel us towards a future that upholds the values that makes Jervis a unique and wonderful place to live and call home. In response to other public comments today, Jervis cannot rely upon a single person, a city manager, to run our, to run our city. We need the collaborative effort of the citizens of this city, and the city manager is not a resident of this city. Thank you again, and happy new year to you all.
Thank you for coming in. Anyone else? Have a hand out there. Uh, did you want to comment? Uh, what's your name? I can't see what that says. Is it S.M. Garrett? S.M. Guest.
Name is Suzie Marston. I reside in Kaiser. Couple quick comments. I echo the comments made by Mr. Wagner. I too am concerned why the council has not had a discussion in the past six months of hiring a permanent city manager. I am also concerned why there's a push to place a charter change on the ballot when aligned to the city's goals. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Thanks for attending, Suzie. Come on forward. Does it say your name and address?
My name is Linda Jensen. I'm, I'm not sure if I can respond to another person.
Well, you can direct. You can direct to the council and maybe counter if you feel something different, how you mean. Uh, you can say pretty much whatever you want during public comment. You can't address that person, but you can address us.
Well, I guess I'm, I would like to address the person that spoke tonight, Mr. Brian McGee. And ask him, he had a very nice, um, presentation here, but I would kind of like to ask him if he was the person that got up and showed the picture of the mayor's husband with the file sheet on the bottom of the paper. I, I want to know if he is that person.
Well, you can ask him after the meeting, but you can address us and remind us of anything you want. That's just the rules. You can't, you can't address him. You can address him on your own time out of the, the thing. But yeah, we're not going to. Everyone, yeah.
I just, I guess what I'm trying to say here is it's nice for people to get up and hear about the community. But when I see some of the actions of certain individuals that come and do very derogative things, it's discouraging. And it doesn't really do, I'm getting very, um, it doesn't do much for it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Not seeing anybody, we will move on. Uh, let's see. We're going to move five A, uh, the charter review. And are you ready?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me adequately?
Uh, you're a little bit muffled, but we'll turn up the volume then.
Let me see if I can get just a little closer. Might help. Does this help?
Yes, and Ed Tronkey is of Jordan Ramus is our city attorney.
Well, I, I was, uh, asked to prepare some, uh, changes to the city charter and, uh, have, have made some, some, some comments to it based on requests for, uh, for these kinds of changes. But before we get into the substance of it, uh, just a little bit about the procedure for, um, amending or, or adopting a new charter. Ordinarily, a city charter is placed on the ballot, and the people choose whether or not to adopt it. They, they don't get to pick one change or another. They would change, would, the way this is proposed is they would, uh, adopt the whole thing or remain under the current charter. Uh, it's adopted by city council and referred to the people by a resolution that says, uh, please place this on the ballot. Uh, if the city council wants that done, then the manager and I will confer and fill out the proper forms that are required. They're dictated by the secretary of state's office, uh, and, uh, filed with the county elections office. They have to be filed about the middle of February. So you have one more meeting, uh, to discuss it tonight. And if you do want to, uh, adopt something, uh, it can be brought back at the next meeting and then, uh, referred, uh, at the next meeting. Uh, I, I haven't seen on the secretary's website the exact date this year, but in the last two years, it was February 15th and 16th. So it is really the middle of the month. Uh, and typically what's, what's referred is the ballot measure and a, an explanatory statement that would be presented to council if one, if the council wants to present one and put that into the voter's pamphlet. Um, and those also have to be filed, uh, at about the same date. Now, uh, so I, there's time to do it, and now is the time to go over these things. So you should have, uh, in your packet, a redlined version of, uh, some proposed changes to the charter. Uh, and I'll just kind of quickly go through what they are. They, they're fairly self-explanatory, but if anybody has any questions, please interrupt and ask a question. Uh, section one just changes it to a, a 2024 city charter. Uh, and there's no change until you get down to seven. And in that one, it says that, uh, the, uh, it, it just clarifies that if there are vacancies on the council, then, uh, uh, the, uh, counselors, uh, the, the number is, uh, counted, you know, but excluding the vacant people. Uh, and the, there is then a, a requirement that's council members follow the rules adopted by resolution by the council, uh, the rules of procedure. Uh, in mayor, in, in section eight, uh, talks about the mayor's authority. It grants a little bit of, uh, extra authority to the mayor to appoint an ad hoc committee, uh, without going to council for all of, uh, of the, uh, the, uh, changes. Uh, this allows things to happen, uh, perhaps between meetings and even at meetings. Uh, the mayor can find interested people and appoint them. Section 12 clarifies with quorum that, uh, this, this quorum is reduced when seats, uh, become vacant and stay vacant, uh, for the period of time that they are vacant. And section 13, uh, builds in a better explanation. Says, except as provided in sections 33 and 17, the express concurrence of a majority of the council members present and constituting a quorum is necessary to decide unaffirmatively on a question. Uh, ordinarily, the rules of procedure do ask, do allow legislative bodies to have a, a quorum at the beginning. And then if people leave, the quorum, uh, may go away. Uh, and unless there's a quorum call, uh, votes can be taken and passed by a, a smaller minority of the people who remain present, uh, as long as it's a majority of those present. So this requires that a quorum must be present in order to, uh, to vote or, or the, the number of people present must constitute a quorum, uh, if they're voting. So it, it just restricts council action from minority, uh, actions and keeps the majority, uh, in control. Um, the next one is on, in section 27, uh, disallows two family members who reside in the same household from serving on council at the same time. This is fairly common in a lot of city council, uh, or city charters, uh, and requirements of councils. It's, it's not, uh, you know, it's not very radical thing to require. Then section 32, uh, says that in addition to, uh, section 27, the qualifications of appointed officers are determined by city council. Uh, at this point in time, uh, the city manager makes the determination of qualifications of, uh, appointed officers, uh, appointed by the manager. And this, uh, puts it back into the council. The big change here is, uh, section 33, uh, which currently provides for a city manager and instead shifts that role to the city administrator. The big difference being that the administrator carries out the wishes of the council while a, a manager has more discretion and authority to make, uh, maybe broader decisions, especially in hiring and firing of staff. Uh, in this particular case, the administrator, uh, doesn't have the right to, uh, hire and fire the, uh, city department heads. Uh, and in, in, after reflecting on this, this week, I spoke to the mayor this morning about this. Uh, I thought that it might be, uh, considered for, for council to talk about this anyway, is, uh, to put in before, in that first paragraph, before the last sentence where it says, council reserves the right to overrule the city administrator's designation. Uh, but to add a sentence there that says that the council may delegate appointment and replacement powers to the city administrator by a written resolution. That way, if you're comfortable with the way the administrator is acting, you could, you can delegate that authority, uh, take some of the political pressure off of you to get together and make decisions at special meetings for hiring and things like that. Uh, and, uh, uh, if, as long as you're comfortable with the way that the manager is managing things. Uh, otherwise, most of the other duties of the administrator are very similar to what's currently in place for the, uh, for the, uh, manager. Uh, but more discretion is taken away and more accountability is placed on the elected officials to run the city, uh, based on what the people expect. Um, and you can, you know, look, look through them line by line. I won't go, go through them. Um, on, in section 34 though, as to the city attorney, uh, I thought, uh, I've always put this in when I've had the opportunity, that the city attorney can be removed with or without cause. There's no, uh, there's no, uh, right to hold the office. Uh, sir, a little city attorney should serve at the, uh, pleasure and discretion of council. Uh, section 35, there's a new one in there, uh, but it should be renumbered 36. I saw that when I, uh, was looking at the clean version. There are two 35s. The, the second one is other officers should be renumbered 36. Uh, and it just describes the, the municipal judge recorder. And then it says that the city council can create such other, uh, officers as council deems necessary. It gives the council flexibility to appoint people to specific, uh, jobs as they may be, uh, needed or may just be convenient in terms of how, uh, council wants the city run. It's just for flexibility. Uh, and then, uh, the, the last one is, uh, the 41, the time of taking effect is as provided by state law. Typically, that's 30 days after the, uh, the, uh, election is held. And the election results have to be, uh, what's called proclaimed under the election laws uh, by the, uh, city election official, uh, within 30 days. So it would take effect after the proclamation. Well, I'd be happy to answer questions if you've got any.
Well, I just, I just, do any of these changes give the mayor more power again?
Uh, yeah, one does, and that's that, that appointment of ad hoc committees. Uh, it's a small.
The mayor would hold that.
It's a small increase in, in, uh, discretion. Um, and council can always say they don't agree with it at tonight and say it should be stricken if they're going to consider sending it to the ballot. and say it should be stricken if they're going to consider sending it to the ballot.
And I'm in no way in charge, can pick what I want to do and do whatever the mayor wants, right? Just put it in layman's terms. I'm not that powerful.
No, the power still resides in the council.
Council, do you have any questions for Ed?
I have no questions.
I have one question, John Harvey. The part on section 12 on the quorum. So if I read that right, the quorum is to be adjusted to a new to a new majority if seats become and remain vacant. So that means if you have, say, one spot left, that means the quorum then becomes four, or a spot is vacated.
Yes, well, if you have seven now, then four. If you had six, it would be... It still has to be four to be a quorum. And it isn't until you get down to five where you end up with three as a quorum, because it has to be a majority, has to be more than 50% of the voting members of the council. So, but the number only goes down so long as the seats remain vacant. Right.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, Junior, you got any questions? So, thank you, Ed. I will say that this will put the power back into the people's hands. We've been operating under a strong administrative government. And this would change it to be more scalable, a small city, such as where much of this comes from, and they run really, really well. The mayor gets no more power. The council still votes. What it would do is put... It would take away the hire-fire human resources in one person. It gives the employees no outlet at that point to have any help if they needed it about that, really. So it would put that check balance back in. It would also give the council oversight on administrative costs that rise. It gives us more choices. And really, I think the charter might have been okay if it hadn't been interpreted the way it was. So I think we just need to make it real clear. I'm satisfied with the changes, and I would like to take a voter... Can I get a motion? Or is there anything else, like, there was asking about that one part? Put in another sentence into that? Would you want to have him do that, or?
Yeah, I'm for it, and I'll make a motion. But we accept the proposal from our attorney, as he had just stated to us. Put on the main ballot.
Good. Can we have him make that alteration add in that thing, though?
Yes, I can make that alteration and bring it back. And I'll work with the city manager to put together the Secretary of State's forms together with a resolution for the next meeting for consideration by the council. And in the meantime, if the voters do or don't like it, they can confer with all of each of you individually, and you can all make your own decisions and vote on it up or down at the next meeting. But it does sound like there's at least a consensus to bring it back at the next meeting. So we'll do that.
I second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Can I get all in favor say aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, all in favors, then aye. The motion carries, so moved. Thank you for being here, Ed.
I will depart then, and my wife thanks you so that I can go home and see her for dinner. Thanks very...
Thanks for all your help.
Good night.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent. Oh, no, that became 10, Michael. So we'll do the committee report next. Or I guess, do I have to do 10B? Let's see. We moved 10, so we got to handle that. We wanted to look at dates for the 2024 annual citywide cleanup. I put some dates on there, Saturday 4/20, 4/27, or 5/4. Can we get a consensus for the date, council? I'm looking in those three dates. Because if I could get two, actually, because we're going to meet with the new representative. So, well, I like 27th. I'm sorry, April 20th, April 27th, or May 4th. The reason I picked around those dates is because it's birthday on the 22nd, I believe. And so that's usually about the time we do it. So the 27th of July, that works for me, too.
Yeah, the 27th works for me. I'd stay away from the date 4/20, myself.
I like that date.
It's legal. Right. So, Michael and Palau, I like it. Robbie? Okay, Junior?
Yeah.
Okay, John? Okay, so we have a consensus. We will ask Roger when we meet with her, then maybe we have the meeting with Bill. When we meet, she's going to come in February and talk to us and introduce herself. And we'll go ahead and present those dates at that next council meeting. Okay. So, thank you. And moving on, the next thing we would need to do is to discuss... We need to set a date for a workshop on the weather rate increases for 2024. As you all know, they're scheduled to be in country's tent of the year 2035. They have been picked on a CPI index that was picked by month, not by average. So I think we need to look at that, because it's $96 roughly over the last two years. Maybe we can do a little better or see about that. So what date would you like, council? I'm open. You know, we need to get on that pretty soon, right?
Yes.
So I'm thinking February. You guys can pick a date in February or a couple dates that we can talk about, but we do need to move on it.
I'll go February 27th. And do February 22nd?
We got some to them, February 26th. Junior? So everybody like them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thursday? Thursday?
So, now we'll go back to where I would, which was consent calendar. Approval of the minutes for December 7th, 2023 regular session and bills list for December 23rd. Is there any questions on those? Bring Neil Asper motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, I'll make that motion to approve that. For the December 7th, regular session, and the bills for December. I second it.
Okay, I think, I'm sorry to stop you. We need to have a motion to approve the consent calendar as per sent it on January 4th and 8th.
Can I just add to what the mayor just said? A motion to approve the consent calendar for the December 7th regular session and the... Sounds good. As said.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor say aye. The motion carries, so moved. Then we're going to move to committee report. December 7th, 2023 ordinance meeting. Mr. LaFier? For those of you that don't know, Mr. LaFier is heading up our ordinance oversight committee.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and city staff. There hasn't been a lot of movement due to the holidays. I kind of gave the members a break over the holidays, but we did meet with the city manager from Tim about the procedure and the flow of complaints that are received by the city, how they will initially be handled by contact, by what agency, be it the maintenance department or police department or a committee staff member themselves, and then moves onward and upward. So there's a progressive disciplinary action towards the abatement process. So that's moving forward. I just had a meeting with them again today, and we have one scheduled for Friday with Councilman Harvey and myself and City Manager Crook Tim to finalize the flow of the complaint process. So that's pretty much all I have right now. We're still new in this committee. So, given it was formed just before the holiday and then over the holiday, I said I give committee members a chance to enjoy their time and to thank members. And we'll go ahead and harden the new year.
Thank you for your volunteerism.
Thank you very much, members, staff members and city council.
Do council have any question for him I should ask about? I'm sorry. No, I'm good. So, moving on. We don't have any presentations this evening, no public hearings. The whole business is the budget committee updating how to proceed with the applicant selection. This year, we have decided to change our budgeting process. We're going to be reviewing how we did it in the past and see if we can have some trainings brought in for everyone. We've gotten some applications. We've gotten more than we need. So we are reviewing those. Those are up here tonight for everyone, and they're private, because they're private. For me, I want more information about it, because we have such a large... Well, we have such a choice to make that I think some of it's pretty vague. I'd like to go to like a step-two process, because we got really good... All applicants are fine. It's just I want to know what they could bring to the table, maybe. Is that appropriate? There's not a lot of information here on this vague thing. We're going to have to sit down with each one and figure out about, as we move forward, because we are going to do trainings, we're going to do more meetings. But as a group, we're going to work with our city manager, Brotham, and work the budget together once we find out where our finances truly stand. So it's down the road a little, but it is coming. So what do you think about, like, maybe getting a small committee together to talk to the applicants about things and maybe do a little vetting?
I'm good with that.
Take a consensus, but that's how we'll proceed.
Yes, from me.
Yes, from me.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous consensus. We'll proceed with maybe a them questionnaire and a little bit of vetting. And then maybe next meeting, we can put together a couple of council members that can do that. Or do you want to do that tonight? To decide who might be the ones to do that?
You can do it that way or however you want, but yeah, yes, we're going to do that.
Robbie, do you want to be on the committee for this? Okay, there's one. Don, Michael, Palau. Well, we got two new ones, so does an old guy want to come on? One of our older.
Well, no, but we need Michael.
Okay.
We got John for the older.
But no, it'd be an all serious. We need to... It would be... Okay. So we'll do John and Ella. Here it is. So, the people that are here that applied, thank you so much. It's appreciated, and we look forward to having them visit with you and get a little more information about you and your desire and what you're doing with the people, okay? Thank you.
On the date for February 27th, did you?
Oh, no, we didn't. Good job. They say February 22nd at 6:00 PM? 5:30 if anybody really could do it, because our staff, you know, they're getting tired. Would anybody be objective to do that workshop? It's actually a workshop that we'll be calling. Water, can we do it at 5:30? Yeah, let's get our staff out of here early. Let's not keep them so late. So 5:30 PM on February 22nd, we're at workshop. We will now move on to staff reports, and we will start with our police department, Lieutenant West.
Thank you. I'd like to start with the calls for service. 123, no arrests. We have second blue arrest on some things. Incidental offenses, 38, one for writ warnings, two agency assist and four outside agency assist. I'd also like to talk about the Christmas parade. Like to take this time to speak about the Jervis Christmas Parade. This was a very special event for all of us, Jervis Police Department. We enjoyed seeing all of the citizens, and especially seeing the smiles on all the young children's faces. We received many compliments on our participation in the event and several words of encouragement and gratitude. I would also like to thank the Mount Angel Police Department, Marion County Sheriff's Office, and Hubbard Police Department for sending officers over to assist traffic control on the parade and the parade route. Not only did these officers help us to help, but a great, safe event that they also enjoyed themselves while doing so. Some of you probably saw some of the officers, they were really giving them to the event. Without the help from our local partners, partnering agencies, we have not been able to provide such high level of safety for the parade participants and spectators. Special thanks to Woodburn Fire Department for being involved in the parade. Knowing they were here and present, gave us extra confidence that we could handle any situation that might arise. I would also, I'd like to move down to the officer acknowledgements. Please join me in sharing our gratitude for all the positive things Officer Camacho has been doing lately or since he's been here. But working for the city of Jervis, Officer Camacho's second anniversary, working for Jervis, started was on November 22nd. Officer Camacho joined us two years ago as a certified police officer and has been a welcome addition to the Jervis Police Department. Officer Camacho is currently the student success officer here in Jervis. I've seen firsthand that the students and staff of the school respect and enjoy having Officer Camacho in their schools. I would also like to thank Officer Kathy Dryden will be celebrating her second anniversary, working for the city of Jervis from January 27th. Officer Dryden started her career in law enforcement in Jervis. She has since graduated from the Oregon Department of Public Safety and Standards. I've enjoyed watching Officer Dryden grow as an officer during her training. Officer Dryden has a passion to work with children and serving the community. Officer Dryden has been a positive and a welcome addition to the Jervis Police Department. I look forward to watching her. I look forward to watching her continue to grow as a police officer at the city of Jervis. And as always, I am grateful and lucky to see senior, to have Senior Officer Dan Marshall and Police Minister Creative Assistant Crystal Camacho. There can't be enough said about how not even there for this department. Those Senior Officers Marshall and Crystal Camacho are always willing to do the extra needed to provide the best service possible. Staff of the Jervis Police Department want to express our gratitude for the opportunity to serve it.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you. Thank you for doing such a wonderful job. It's really nice that, to see everybody come together like that, thank you. Officer Camacho is the soccer coach, and he's the girls' basketball coach now too. So he's going above and beyond for our community. Throw that in there, it's really nice. Well, love to public works. Roger, did you want to go in over any of it, or it's in our pocket? Maybe read it.
I believe it's in the back, yes.
Okay. So I'm going to just read it because Kyle has gone on vacation, is that okay? So it says, "With the bid for the wastewater treatment plant improvement awarded last month, we are eager to get started on construction. I do not have a timeline yet for the project, but hope to get more information from pre-construction meeting. During December, the transfer pumps experienced other, another issue. This time it was electrical in nature. Fortunately, we had to spare, we had the spare parts on hand to repair it and get it running within a day. These pumps will be replaced with a project with a surmisable type design that is far more efficient and reliable, requiring less maintenance. The two thousand and six Ford F-150 service truck had been experiencing some mechanical issues that came to a point that further damage would result from neglecting it. After receiving an announcement, Roger and I discussed options, and it was decided to have repairs made. The truck has a little over thirty thousand miles on it, and the otherwise been very reliable. The repairs were costly in total of just under thirty, four hundred dollars. At this time, all three service trucks are in good shape and ready for any type of service demanded on them. We are always looking for ways to operate more efficiently to save either time, money, or both. Our chemical supplier has been, has a program that saves on every gallon of sodium hypochlorite, chlorine that is used for water and wastewater disinfectant. If a minimum amount is purchased at a time, they will supply the storage tanks at no cost, and by doing this, we should see over a thousand dollars in savings annually between fewer delivery chargers in this count." Wow. "The city hall generator has been experiencing some reliability problems this month, including multiple low pressure codes causing it to shut down during its weekly auto run cycle. The company who sold and installed it will be coming out on the twenty-ninth of December to diagnose this issue. This is not the first reliability issue we have had with this unit. I will be taking it a step further and contacting the manufacturer as we noticed foam inside the top of the engine as well. The unit has less than nine hours on it and has had multiple issues running shortly after installation. This should be, all be covered under the warranty. The parade and tree lighting held on the eighth went very well. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Tim Last for organizing the traffic team that came to assist. I would also like to thank all the employees, spouses and children that helped put together the floats for public works. The parade was a success and great for the community. Final gents, Jervis Public Works." I'd just like to comment and say Kyle is just an amazing guy. He is moving mountains and finding all kinds of resourceful things for our department. He's identifying needs real well, and he's, just his communication is just wonderful. Enjoying working with him. Council, you have anything?
I agree, you've been doing a great job.
I agree.
All of them are, all of our employees are. And now we'll move to our city manager, Pro Tem, Roger Brown. For those of you who have not met Roger, he is actually our city recorder slash intro Pro Tem city manager at this point. Go ahead, Roger.
Good evening, everyone. Pleased to be with you here tonight. Proud and happy to announce that Laura is going to join us full time starting tomorrow. And from what we've seen so far, she's done a great job and look forward to that continuing. A lot of things have gone on in the last month. We've gotten purs fixed. All the files have been uploaded. The invoice will be issued by first tomorrow, and the upload for the ACH transfer for the six months that we put in here recently will be done on, on or about the twelfth. So we will be caught up there. The December first will be done after we finish an audit of all of the employees' payroll records. We have some discrepancies that we need to fix, and we don't want to have any W-two discrepancies by not fixing those. That work will be done about mid-month. We've brought in a C P A, her name is Sarah Johnson. She comes highly recommended. Started on Wednesday, we executed a contract and provided a retainer. She's already been on site and was not here today, she was ill, but plans on being back on site tomorrow. The first thing she's going to be doing is looking at all of the payroll records and making sure that we are hundred percent accurate. And I think it's a good idea to have a third set of eyes, or I call it the third set of eyes on this. She's very knowledgeable, she's done a project like this for Good River County. Went to help them do a reorganization, but a lot of their finance people left all at the same time and left them in a lurch, and she helped fit them organized and got the job done. She comes very highly recommended by a company, a accounting firm called Aldridge Advisors. They're a west coast regional C P A firm. They have offices starting in Anchorage, Alaska and ending in San Diego. With about, they have about three hundred CPAs on staff. Speaking of CPAs, we're going to be visited by our auditors for our annual audit, they will be on site starting Monday at eight thirty in the morning, they'll be here a couple of days doing their fieldwork. We have another audit happening, which is a C G S audit, and they're going to be here at eleven fifteen on Monday morning. So I'm going to be busy running back and forth between auditors for a couple of days. Let's see. One thing that has become clear is that there are not a lot of written down operating procedures, things that we really need to have as a city. One of the things is the building permit process. It's, there's no real solid procedure. So we're going to develop one with the help of Marion County. Already talked with them. They're going to give us kind of a roadmap, and we're going to adapt that to our processes here. And that process is going to, Laura's going to help with that starting about middle of next week, after she gets her feet under the desk a little bit. And talking about procedures, I've been looking for a document that gives me an idea of what internal, internal accounting controls have been put in place. I can't find one. So I'm going to miss the writing one. Internal controls are meant for two things. They help protect the assets of the city by segregating duties and responsibilities, and they protect the people that are doing the actual work. It gives us a guideline of what they can and can't do. Along with that, I'm going to do a, I'm going to call it a matrix change. We're going to enhance within our accounting system, who gets to do what. We're going to reassign some rights and have some accountability that we haven't really had. It's high time to do that. I've started a document here. I'm not done with it yet. As soon as I am, I will pass it along to the council for their review. One thing that we are going to do, well, I don't need, I don't need to look at email, I already know. We're going to start training with our software company, our supplier. We're going to do cross-training in payroll, accounts payable, utility billing, and court docketing. We need to have everybody in the city business office understand these functions, how to do them. If someone is sick or takes a vacation, we can't miss a beat. We've got to be on the ball. So that's what I've been working on here. If you turn over a rock, you're going to find another rock to turn over. And I'm now working on the second dump truck load. So at any rate, that's my report and happy to be here, thank you.
Roger, thank you. I've been working really close with Roger, council, and we have had some things go on where I've had to visit the bank to help get the rights put into the right hands. We've accomplished that, our ACH transfer money had been placed in a hand that wasn't even administrative, don't know how that happened yet, and it has been corrected. We are looking into the credit cards because there's some issues there that we need to get administrative rights put to the administrators. The correct ones are still here. Roger, the payroll, you know what happened? I mean, that's, and Sarah will be handling that correct. When did that start, do you know?
Those issues have been ongoing since July. We can trace it back to that time period that it started, and it's has continued in various levels of severity from that point. And that's what Sarah Johnson is going to be helping us with.
Any questions, council, about things?
Well, I'm glad that we have the auditor here. We need to get this under control.
Well, it will give us a start. We were left without any standard operating procedures, we weren't. Things didn't get handed over, I wish we had gone through the tax service, but we didn't. So what we need to do is what we're doing right now, we brought in professionals to fix things and let us know what happened, right? So I just want the community to know there were some errors, we're fixing it. And actually, we're actually in a good spot. Errors hadn't been paid, reported for seven months, was it? Hadn't been done. Bank reconciliations, extensions and closings had not been done. So now those things will be done, and we're moving up. When Sarah Johnson leaves here, we have been assured that the new staff will be trained to help with all things. So I'm feeling confident, council. Roger, thank you. You've pointed out the problems and you have got right on, thank you for fixing those things today.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Good job. Do you have anything to add? Hey. Laura, I'd like to welcome you. You were among six applicants, and you met the requirements, your references were stellar, and the council decided on you for those reasons. Thank you, and welcome to Jervis City Hall. Go ahead, Mom.
I was just wondering if there's any comments?
Oh, we're not doing the mayor's thing yet, but okay. We were on staff reports, I would have been a kudo, you, Mama. Now, so mayor comments and councils, my mayor comments to you are, I think that's a wonderful idea. There's a lot of people that have lived here, and their whole lives were here, and we need to remember them there. They're history. I think it's a wonderful project, and we do have a live tree option because of our voting funds that we can use. Council, do you think that would be something we'd like to do?
Yeah, I mean like a live tree that we have there that has a football on it, so after the, after the December, when we take it down, we can go plant it? Okay. Sounds good.
We'll be looking for community volunteers that like to do things, so keep this in mind. Those ad hocks, I'll be a point one for this.
When it comes to the ornaments on the tree, are we able to just like bring our ornament with our person and whatever? I don't know, you said there's a small grass tag, is that the name? I'm just trying to figure out what was going on with that.
I think that the people who have, who would like to honor their their loved ones will bring that ornament. I think the figures should have a tag to put on there, so they can remember themselves. And then, yeah.
So it'd be like collaborative, they bring an ornament that represents their loved one, and then we give a tag with their name on it. Is that what you think? Oh, okay.
So they would bring it to the city.
I don't believe those tags would be very costly.
No, I think we can swing it, in fact, we might get them donated.
Oh, yeah.
I just wondered if I, you know, brought my ornament down, if I'd be able to hang it on the tree myself or if I have to give it to somebody to hang on the tree.
I'll have the city.
We could have a decorating party with those that want to join. Collect them and then maybe have the kids hang them.
Yeah. I would prefer that they would hang their own. That's what I would.
Lovely idea.
Are we going to have some kind of donations for that? To help, I don't know, help for the next year parade or following year?
donations, what do you mean, junior?
Get donations for the following year. We go at this year. We get donations, we can put that into the Christmas fund for either the parade or something else for Christmas.
Well, the other agency volunteered their time, ours are already on duty, so it would be more like the permit cost, and maybe we could do, like I donated the hot chocolate this year and the cups. John and Linda gave for stuff for the bags. My mom bought pencils and that, so pretty much we run on donated, but yeah, we put a thing together where we can build for it. I mean, would you like to head that up, junior?
I think a chance to, you know, alleviate some of the costs.
Well, a lot of the council is the one that, we always have mega foods, you know, oranges from them, and Safeway gave us candy, so yeah, if you'd like to head that up, that'd be great. Maybe we can start talking about it in like June or July. Okay, I'll remember that. Council, anybody else? Oh, Rob has something. He was talking about going to a a conference. What was the cost on that, one seventy-five? One twenty-five, and it was a day thing? And it was and you're willing to go and represent Jervis for that? Wonderful, he went to the last one and brought back all kinds of information that he gleaned, and it was very resourceful, actually. Roger, can we look at the budget and see if there's a hundred and twenty-five dollars that's available for trainings for the council? We still have some left, I don't think we've used any of our, except mine, but I had most of it.
Certainly take a look, and I don't think it's going to be terribly difficult to find a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
When was that?
Would any other council like to go? It's a luncheon.
Where is it?
It's in Portland, it's at the the A Drive in Portland.
Yeah, in the house, the reps will be there, my friend, Thaucher, Senator Thaucher. My friend Thatcher, Senator Thatcher will be there. I've seen her on there. Some other ones from both sides of the aisle. Might be a good way to get in to know some county folks and see about our votes. Yeah, work a little bit. No, there's a whole, there's senators. No, if you want to go, go. You want to go, Junior? Okay, let's try to get Junior going too. Anybody else? Okay. All right. I might go, but I think I'll just pay my own to get if I do, because I'm going to be a late entry. My son's having surgery. Okay. All right. So let's look into it and I think we'll do it there, Rob, but maybe there's four of us going. All right, Joel, you want to try it? Want to go? You're taking a rain check. Okay. All right. Well, with that being said, I think this meeting, now we're adjourned at 8:09. Thanks for coming, everyone.